This is a special presentation from the Brighton Central School District Board of Education.
Good evening and welcome to the Brighton Central School District Board of Education Education Meeting for April 23rd, 2019. To begin this evening, as is our custom, we offer the opportunity for public participation. Any members of the public that are here with us in attendance in the boardroom are welcome to speak to the board on any matter. It does not have to be a matter that is on the agenda for this evening. If you wish to speak to the board, we ask you to please be brief in your statement or your question. You will be recognized and I ask you to move to the podium to speak to the group. So is there anyone here tonight who wishes to address the board? Okay, seeing that we have none for public participation, board, may we have a motion, please, for approval of our agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Marv and seconded by Karen. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion then also, please, for approval of the minutes from our April 9th, 2019 Business Meeting, please?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Larry and seconded by Andrea. Does anyone have anything to correct or additions, deletions to the minutes? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, this evening then, we do have an update from Dr. Debbie Baker on our 21st Century Learning Initiative. So, Dr. Baker, welcome.
Thank you very much. I actually would like to start out this evening by thanking the Board of Education. This is my time of the year to come and really update you on some of the exciting things that are happening inside of our classroom and I do appreciate the continued opportunity to present this information. Full disclosure on tonight's presentation, I sent out in preparation about a month or so ago for tonight to our building principals as well as our instructional leaders and kind of just explained to them the essence of like what I was hoping to accomplish and said, "Do you have any ideas of what classrooms I should be highlighting? Is there something that you're seeing as you're visiting the classrooms that you think is particularly interesting?" I lost count of the myriad of responses that I got. So I guess in some ways, my apologies in that I'm only showing you, this is going to be like a tapas menu of some of the really, really great work that's happening in our classrooms. I'm going to ground our work by kind of taking a look or stepping back and looking at our Brighton blueprint. In particular, it's our mission and vision because, you know, many times in many strategic plans, we write these words and we say, you know, "What does this, you know, yeah, 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 we're going to do that as well." But what does that really mean? And if you take a look at some of these words about becoming responsible, that our role is to help our students become contributing members of a global society. And in doing that, we want them to be able to make important decisions. We want them to think creatively, to work collaboratively, to be critical thinkers for authentic audiences. My hope is tonight, by the time I'm done, within the next few minutes, to show you ways in which our students are actually accomplishing and realizing what our vision and mission have set out for them. So, in thinking about it, we've got a lot of work that we've been going on in the district. And again, you know, in the previous presentations, I shared to you, shared you some technology initiatives and then we talked about learning spaces for a while. And as I started to think about this year, I realized the lines are really blurred these days. There's a real convergence happening when we think about what we're trying to accomplish curriculally, instructionally, as well as the space that we're helping kids learn in. So in curriculum, we really want to develop curriculum where kids can develop deep understandings and be responsive to all students. Instructional practices need to be engaging. They need to really involve students in experiences that allow them to participate with authentic audiences. And then we want to provide them with flexible learning spaces to support all of this work so that they can do so as self-guided learners. What I thought I'd do is I'd spend a little bit of time talking about each one of these areas and really trying to hopefully make some connections for you about what, how we see this manifesting in our classrooms in each of these areas. And then at the end, kind of bring it all together with some, some of that convergence work that I was talking to you about. In the area of curriculum, teachers have been designing common units of study which help them focus curriculum and teaching on the development and deepening students' understanding and transfer of that learning to authentic situations. In addition, particularly this year, we really started to look at what it means to be responsive to all of our students, meaning that we're taking time to listen to their stories, to listen to their voices and making sure that that's incorporated within the lessons that we're teaching. And some of the examples, for instance, in the upper right-hand corner in Lonnie Mazurowski's fifth grade classroom, she started to incorporate diversity elements within her classroom by something as simple as taking all of the books in her independent reading book and then labeling each as to what diversities each one of those books represented. It might have been through an author diversity, it might have been a cultural diversity, a racial diversity, a socioeconomic diversity, a learning diversity. But anyway, really trying to explicitly point out to her students that we are just that. We are a global community made up of all different types of learners and they're represented in the literature that we're allowed, that we're giving kids access to. And down towards the left, so this is an example I actually shared with the board a little bit earlier this year. This was the early explorers unit coming out of the seventh grade social studies class. And obviously, as you would expect, early explorers talked about coming into the, at the time, you know, the, the new colonies and meeting up with the Native Americans. As part of this unit, students were asked to really evaluate the myth of the Thanksgiving holiday, focusing on how the Native Americans were stereotyped in our typical teaching and what that really means. And in many instances, this population was excluded from really the actual, you know, the actual story of what happened. They also read Native American perspectives about Thanksgiving holiday and students evaluated children's books that were found in the Brighton library for accuracy and relevancy. Following this, the students wrote their own books that were more reflective of or historically accurate. And I, this works, fingers crossed. This is an example of one of those books.
Ms. Baker. Garrett. The separatists of England landed in America in 1620. When the separatists of England first met Native Americans in American London, commonly known as squanton. The separatists, commonly known as pilgrims, are what the English settlers should be referred to as. When he was young, squanton was sold into slavery in Spain and when he came back to America, his whole tribe had passed away from common English illnesses. Squanton thought the settlers taught the settlers how to hunt and grow crops in the harsh weather as they were the only people here. Several celebration of their harvest when the Wobkano could find separatists occurred in 1620. The Wobkano had brought deer and the separatists decided to sign a 50-year peace treaty with the Wobkano team, Massaso. After the 50 years, when things went downhill, the separatists had taken more and more land from the Wobkano for themselves. The Wobkano felt this unfair, so Massaso's son, Medico, or his English name, Phil, they rebelled. What took place was after, it was a lot of war in a very small amount of time. Many Native Americans had settled. Villagers were burnt and leaders and innocents alike were killed. The war only lasted a year and was named King Phil, was named after King Phil, his death and the war. The separatists never treated the Wobkano fairly. The conflict was never fully resolved. This war was just a small piece of the United States history. It shouldn't be overshadowed and shadowed by a larger war like this wars. This war should be remembered for its brutality.
And then Garrett, of course, goes on to give his bio as the author. But anyway, this particular project culminated in then, the seventh graders sharing their stories with fifth grade students to not only engage them in real life, real world, actual teaching around the Thanksgiving holiday, but to also get their input with respect to the quality of writing that the students had done. In our last, or in the bottom right-hand corner, students in Laura Clancy's Race and Rhetoric class studied civil action. And what they were doing was they followed the study of civil discourse and understanding how media can contribute to activist statements. Students then were put in groups and they could self-select their own projects or their own issues, current issues to study. And then once they did that, they had to create podcasts that were then published to the YouTube channel, to our Brighton YouTube channel, where they actually not only researched or shared what they had found, but also shared their opinions. The podcasts themselves are about 10 minutes. I'm just going to really share about a minute or so with it, with you, just so you can get a general idea of what students are doing.
Good evening. My name is Gabriel Baraklottan and today I'm joined by our local pterodactyl expert, Cole.
Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Cole Kuzek and I would like to welcome in Jay Well.
Um, I prefer the chief executive baker.
Okay, um, welcome to our podcast feed and today we'll be discussing an issue on the minds of many seniors, college admissions. With the applications due just in a couple of weeks, students are definitely feeling the pressure. I know I am. I don't know about you guys, but um...
For sure, for sure, yeah.
Mainly, we wanted to discuss the issue being brought up in the lawsuit against Harvard around affirmative action and the admissions process. So just to give a little background on what the affirmative action, what kind of admissions process is, is that colleges nowadays are looking for specific races, genders, people from different places all over the country to try to, kind of fill in their demographics and different statistics that they have about the college. And so where that all started was Harvard, actually, which is kind of ironic now that the lawsuit is against them. But it happened according to the New Yorker article by Jean Jerson almost a century ago when they wanted to essentially limit the number of Jewish students at Harvard just because they were, although they had the grades, they were considered, let's see, they were considered, hmm, no, how should I, um, lacking in qualities of character and personality according to the article. And so instead of just a proposed maximum, which is what they...
So the students go on to explain about how affirmative action is being carried out in today's colleges and universities. And then they go on to express their personal opinions based upon their own experiences about what, how they feel about that. When I talked to Mrs. Clancy about the different types of topics that students were researching, she said it was really, just a really wide swatch of what was happening from, as you saw, affirmative action in the college to topics such as African-American imprisonment and, and overpopulations in our prison systems. With respect to instructional practices, we look at our preferred instructional practices, as I said earlier, that are going to engage and incite real, real learning and utilize the tools that students will be using throughout their lives. Specifically, we promote pedagogical techniques which integrate the disciplines, making thinking visible, support inquiry and individualization, and utilize technology to support the implementation of differentiated learning studies. So at our top, what I wanted to share with you here in our second grade, this is a pretty comprehensive project that the students in Mrs. Linton's and Kathy Vanbury's classes undertook. It was a STEM-related project in relationship or in response to the removal of the Rainbow Playground. And I think the board members have probably heard about the removal of the Rainbow Playground as a part of the construction project. So students were asked, or following, reading a book called The Most Important Thing, the students were asked to write poems about what they felt was the most important thing about the Rainbow Program, about the Rainbow Playground. This really helped them to deal with the loss of their play area. Following this, they learned, they learned, had lessons on safety, on construction, on playground equipment. Mr. Tappin actually came in and shared with them the designs of the new playground and the new construction site. And from there, the students were asked to, and given an opportunity, to actually construct their own playgrounds for what they would use or what they would do to replace the Rainbow Playground. Following this, what the students did was they presented their poems and their, and their writing using green screen technology about the Rainbow Playground.
The Rainbow Slide, written by a mom and dad. The important thing about the Rainbow Playground is the Rainbow Slide. It is very fast when you don't hold on to the slide. And if you do, then you will go very, very slow. The Rainbow Slide is fast because whenever I go down this Rainbow Slide, my hands are behind my back. And I love going fast because it makes me feel like I'm on a roller coaster. But the most important thing about the Rainbow Playground is for you to have fun.
The students presented their projects to students, to fellow second graders, and then Mr. Tappin was asked to provide his own input on, on what their, what their designs were. In our bottom example, we have kindergartners using a technology called Kubeto. What Kubeto is, is a programming cube where students can actually write coding language. And we intermix not only the utilization of coding language with literacy aspects. Students wrote stories using the Kubeto map and Kubeto went on a journey. And so they had to use directional signals like north, south, east and west. Their stories had beginnings, they had middles and they had ends. And then at the end, what they did was they were coding or programming Kubeto to follow the path of their story. In the bottom example, students in Karen Flynn's 10th grade class, following their study of A Tale of Two Cities, were given up to 20 different opportunities to, or projects that they could engage in that would allow them to display their understanding of the themes and concepts that they were learning within A Tale of Two Cities. Students were, projects included the creation of newspapers, board games, greeting cards, videos and essays comparing and contrasting the Declaration of the Rights of Man to the American Declaration of Independence. In this particular example, two students have written an original song combining two genres of music, pop and rap. And finally, we can't talk about instructional practices without mentioning differentiation. The increased access to technologies allowed our teachers to individualize learning for each one of our students. Here we see Colleen Hall talking about the use of Schoology for just that purpose.
If you're curious about different ways that technology can be used with tablets in the classroom, here's a little example of how Schoology can use differentiation techniques. This is a sophomore class focusing on A Tale of Two Cities. You'll notice that the students have focused lessons. Embedded within these lessons are questions that are differentiated for students, including feature videos and different, differentiated responses. So once the student submits their answer, they're able to see responses that give them immediate feedback and prompts for advanced learning. Listen as this student explains what she's learned.
Okay, so right now, I'm watching the video recording and then I'm reading along with it and it's easier to understand because if there's a word that I don't know how to pronounce, it's pronounced correctly and I can like understand and follow where I am so I can answer the questions right.
Students are also able to self-pace their, as they work through each of the sections. And they can blend their own technology with the technology that's supported in the tablets by the devices that they incorporated alongside of their tablets. There are some times when traditional learning and traditional tools are best for that student and those are also encouraged.
The purpose of our work in advancing learning spaces is to design classrooms that our students center. This means that students have flexible spaces, they can make choices, thinking is visible and they can provide a variety, or they can arrange themselves in a variety of groups in order to meet their learning needs. In our fourth grade, in Rachel's, Rachel Kozoff's classroom here in the fourth grade, students utilize wiggle seats, chairs on wheels, soft seating and floor space to work independently in small groups and in large groups. After instructions are given, students are tasked with finding their space that they can best meet, that best meets the needs and objectives of the lesson. As Rachel says, it's amazing to see the students advocate for their learning needs and start to learn who they are as learners and what they need. In our bottom right-hand example, this is Carrie Welling's seventh grade math class. Students work routinely in groups to solve math problems. And we see this a lot. I know the Board of Education, when you visit, you've seen our use of white walls. This really promotes this idea of public, public display of what we're learning. So in this particular example, the classroom was short, was sorting integers in addition expressions. Each group had to justify how they chose the group of eight expressions. Routinely, what teachers are seeing is that students are more apt to or inclined to write on the board as well as then be able to share with their peers. In addition, one of the added bonuses, then, the teachers can go around and very quickly see what, where the, where the misconceptions lie and correct them on the fly. In the second picture up here, you'll see, once the students in this particular situation solved their problems, they came together in a campfire situation and shared their solutions. In the upper top right-hand corner, we see the same in a social studies class. According to this teacher, the biggest thing that she noticed by increasing the amount of white space within her walls is the increased level of engagement for the students. When she'd done jigsaw activities in the past, the students were very close within their own desks and sharing. The students in this particular, in particular situation can really share and their, their learning is evident and it becomes public. She's noticed that students verbally participate now, many times students who typically would have sat in the background. She also said that they're very thoughtful about what they put because they know that what they're thinking is on public display. We've had a lot of success and a lot of engagement and excitement within our learning spaces work for sure. And finally, the piece de resistance is the convergence of all of these into really powerful learning for our students. We celebrate this convergence of these practices into authentic experiences where students learn about the world and in many, many cases, how they can make a difference. In the upper right-hand corner, the Buckland Park collaboration, this was a collaboration between Katie Fallon's class, Katie Covert's class at French Road, Ashley Rhodes and Robin Ackerman's class at Council Rock and Maria Katsatos's class at TCMS. I'm hoping just kind of on the side, the board is, the board sees that one of the things that we've been able to do, not only through the technology, but because of some of the professional development, is really help teachers engage with each other across our buildings. This probably is, is something that's happening more than I've ever seen it in the last five years. In this particular example, students were given the, the question or the, the situation where the town of Brighton has purchased 26 new acres of land next to Buckland Park. What should we do with it? So students in all of these classes did various aspects of the project. Some researched the use of community space, others talked to the town supervisor to see what some of the options were. They wrote letters of persuasion, trying to kind of determine what they should do with this space. And in this particular flyer, what you're seeing is an advertisement. Katie actually applied for a grant from the School Seedling Grant Program and it was granted money to purchase 50 white spruce seedlings. So on April 27th, with the help of George, George Smith's Lorax Club, so again, this is literally a four-building collaboration, students are going to come together at Buckland Park with their family to plant the white spruces. In the second example, the one in the middle, you see, this is an example of a second grade Mrs. Orvick's class in response to St. Patty's Day Math. These students joined a project, it was a project that was being offered worldwide, where they were tasked with proving or disproving the hypothesis that there are more green clovers in a box of Lucky Charms than there are any other shapes in the box. And so what they did was in Mrs. Orvick's class, they got their, you know, boxes of Lucky Charms and they counted them out, they collected their data, but then they contributed their data to a worldwide set. And they had then access to not only that worldwide set of data, but also word problems that they needed to solve. One of the observations Mrs. Orvick made in this, in addition to the fact that the students were, you know, she spent time, they located some of these schools on the map, really talking about what it meant to collaborate with students from across the United States as well as across the world. She said that because the numbers were so large, the students were actually answering problems, probably beyond the scope of a second grade math class because the numbers were getting so big. And then in our last example, on the upper left-hand corner, you see the eighth grade social studies class, Adrian Forkin's class, as a matter of fact, where students are learning about the non-Jewish rescuers during the, during the Holocaust. And this was a part of their Holocaust unit. Students learned about the types of the rescue that occurred in the Nazi-occupied Europe and considered the moral and ethical choices and not, that the non-Jews made in order to help the Jewish individuals survive, the Jewish people survive. They also related the terms bystander, victim and perpetrator to the Holocaust and to their own lives. And the unit incorporated the local connection to rescue efforts with the Fort Ontario Refugee Center. This is in direct response to some professional development that Adrian had participated in about three weeks earlier than the unit. So the timing was absolutely perfect. And the, the professional development was provided by a local organization, echoes and reflections. So where do we go from here? Continuing with supporting the learning and the growing of not only our teachers, but also the positive practices that are happening in our classrooms. We know that not only are these positive practices, we want to make them ubiquitous across all of our classrooms, but we also want to bring in the elements of socially-emotional learning that we know are so important because in order for our students to be prepared for professions that we, that we haven't yet imagined, we need to make sure that we not only prepare them in school, but that we prepare them for life as well. So I hope that this gives you, again, just a little glimpse of some of the really positive things that our students are doing in their classrooms as, and in contribution to, I guess, meeting our schools, our, our mission and vision for them.
Very nice. Well, thank you so much, Debbie. I think, certainly open to Florida questions from any of the board members. The thing that strikes me in when you provided your report to us ahead of time and I looked through the slides, I think the convergence aspect of what you talk about is fantastic because I know I look back on all the different committees that virtually every board member that's here tonight has been on at one time or another, going back a long way, that brought us to where we are today. You know, you talk about all these different parallel tracks, some of which started a long, long time ago. And most of these items started with our teachers, an idea in a classroom, teachers working with each other, peer-to-peer, collaborating and bringing forward the ideas on furniture and instructional technology and then taking professional development work to the next level and then continuing to share that out. And this is the type of thing that happens every single day that I don't think most people would ever recognize in the community because it just happens and hopefully they see happy and engaged children come home, right? But we've gotten to this place by leadership and plan development and all of our teachers and staff bringing forward ideas, sharing with each other and making that work and making that happen, evolving it to a point where it works in the classroom. And you see that across all aspects of what you showed. And when we talk about our construction projects, all of that work feeds that work also, the redesign of Council Rock and the, and the other buildings, taking into account the elements that we, that you've touched on here with regard to how a classroom looks, how lighting appears, what we use in terms of writing material on the wall, different types of instructional technology, chairs and lack thereof, in some cases. It's just really incredible to take stock every once in a while, I guess now, once a year in this update, but to really stop and reflect for a moment on all of the work over a very long period of time to get us to the point that we're at.
The planets are really aligning. I mean, you know, when, as I started to think about this and like I said, I was just thrilled at the, at the myriad of examples that I had to share with you tonight, it really was a feel-good just because, again, there are so many positive things, to your point, that have been, you know, sometimes we forget that this takes a long time to actually, you know, affect change. But the research will say, second order change is a five to seven-year process and I think we're seeing that shift right now.
Great.
You know, we, you as a group made a lot of strategic decisions over the years to think about this a little bit differently and... to think about this a little bit differently and not just to treat cases of iPads, places, and say, "Good luck," but really to build a program from the ground up, saying, "What are ways we can think about the spaces our kids are learning in and the tools that they're using to not just be expensive word processors or search devices, but to really be integrated into learning as another tool?" And for the space donor, that commitment at the same time. And that really requires people to think differently about their instruction. I'm so impressed with the way our staff has embraced this work and thought differently about their instruction, to not just, "Oh, this is cool, I can use a computer for this," but really think about the ways that technology can expand kids' horizons, engage them differently in their learning, help them demonstrate their learning differently, engage in the work differently. It requires a lot of work on their part, a lot of work in Debbie's leadership, my leader's leadership, our staff throughout the district, and, you know, Edmonds has played a huge role, but teachers, over and over and over again, you know, it's ironic, Judy, you're here tonight, the project that, that you and Andrew worked on, uh, with your kids in the Extended Studies Program at Council Rock, that all of you received a link to. You know, this type of work is thinking differently about instruction, and it's a, it's a pretty significant shift that we've seen over time. And it's really exciting because I see it as a dad, too. I see the ways that, you know, our kids, teachers, all the time we're using this, and the way they're engaging in their learning in a very, very different way. The platforms they go onto to see their work and exchange material with teachers and find work and find collaborative opportunities with other students, or the way we can see what's happening during the day in our daughter's first-grade classroom and the type of work that's happening, and engage in that so much differently than just a few years ago. Uh, it's really pretty incredible. So, we thank you for supporting it, thank you for leading that, and thanks to our teachers for making that happen.
And you know, I think, Kevin, you raised a great point, and I think back, for one example, you know, things brought forward, original ideas brought forward by our teachers, that on their own brought forward, found a partner, collaborative teacher, maybe they were groups, maybe they weren't. Uh, and the work that we view in the summer, uh, through the Teacher Center, around how I want to change my classroom, right, with a minimal amount of dollar investment, and the ideas that teachers have brought forth and that we've reviewed in this room, and more and more teachers have done that over the past few years, and just organically really brought that forward and forth. And now, when you go through the different buildings, and you see the differences room to room, and how they all work, but they all work differently, and so the experience that a child has throughout the K-12, uh, life in Brighton is, is really quite incredible, and not automatically the same thing in every classroom and every year that they spend, you know, it's, that's quite, quite interesting also, I think, for students' experience.
And I can't help but, because of the time that you're bringing back to expenditures, too, and the reality is, first of all, there's, you know, a proposal to withdraw money from a reserve fund to support the replacement materials, so it's not included in the general fund. It's coming out of reserve to kill the news for that. So, it's smart planning on your part for that to be able to happen, but also, this is not, um, anymore an option for us to say, "Well, just spend less on computers, and then you can afford more for whatever." You know, if you spent less on that, then you'd be able to be under the cap, whatever the case may be. I would, um, challenge anybody in current work-life to say, "Well, I can do without technology in my work," or smartphone in my daily life. It, it's just very rare that somebody would be able to say, "Yes, I could..." Now, a lot of us would like to be able to walk away from that, right, but the way it's integrated in our lives now, and it's integrated in a very similar way into instruction, it is just a part of who we are and what we do. It's not an hat-on.
It's not the focus, the device isn't the focus, it's...
Correct. It's integrated into the work, so, and it's just maximizing the work in a different way.
Great. Anything else? Thank you very much, Debbie, we appreciate it. If that's straight, we probably ought to visit some classrooms again, take a look at some of the newer things that maybe we haven't seen, we'll have to talk about that. Uh, another, the other significant item of business that we have tonight, folks, is the, um, each-year component districts, for those that may be watching at home. And again, we remind folks that our agenda and all backing materials are online, excuse me, under the Board of Education tab on the website. Once a year, uh, component districts for each BOSI's are asked to approve the BOSI's administrative budget, which is only a portion of what they do, but the BOSI's administrative budget, and also, uh, seats on the BOSI's Board of Education that come up in a regular rotation also. So, tonight, we do have, um, our opportunity to weigh in on their administrative budget and also three different seats, not from the Brighton District, but from three other districts that we do as a component district of BOSI's One have to approve. So, what I would like to ask the board is, we need to do this actually in four separate votes. So, I guess, under item number six, I would ask for a motion to approve, first of all, let's, uh, let's ask for a motion first to approve the administrative budget as proposed to us by BOSI's One.
So, moved.
Second.
Moved by Marv and seconded by Karen. Uh, does anybody have any questions, comment on that? All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, so, we are seven yes votes and zero no votes on that. And then we have three different seats that are, uh, up for vote. Uh, the first is a motion, please, to, uh, vote in favor of Brian Buttram, Rush Henrietta, uh, for that seat. So, moved.
Second.
Moved by Larry and seconded by Marv. Any discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So, there's seven yes and zero no. A motion, please, to cast one vote for the election of Laura Whitcomb, uh, resident of the East Rochester Central School District.
So, moved. Second.
Moved by Julian, seconded by Andrea. Thank you. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We are seven yes on that and zero no. And then finally, please, a motion, uh, to cast one vote for the election of Nita Singh, resident of the Pittsburgh Central School District, for that seat.
So, moved.
Second.
Moved by Karen and seconded by Marv. Any questions on that one? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Then we are seven yes, again, Kim on that and zero no. So, we will file that paperwork and send it off to the BOSI's One folks. So, thank you on that. Uh, we have our consent agenda this evening, a couple of items around fundraising activities. We do want to acknowledge a generous gift from the Brighton Education Fund for $200 to go toward the annual Dee Bradley Smith Art Purchase Awards at Brighton High School. So, we appreciate that from the BEF, and we appreciate those who support the Brighton Education Fund with their donations. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Further business this evening? Before we go, anything else, board members? Anything further? Uh, before we adjourn, I will make one quick reminder with regard to the budget. District residents, uh, have received multiple notifications through our email system, and additional information will be forthcoming with regard to the full budget that we are proposing, uh, to the residents of the Brighton Central School District to be voted on on May 21st. All of that material is on the website, and we encourage folks to take a look at it and look through it. We have added nine separate, um, budget forums, uh, open houses, if you will, over the upcoming period of time between now and the vote on May 21st. The first of which will be this Thursday, there will be two on Thursday, one at 2:00 to 3:00 in the afternoon, uh, and one at 7:00 to 8:00 PM that evening, correct? And those, um, are all, all those nine dates and times are also listed on the website. So, any residents of the district who are interested in coming and having a conversation, uh, with regard to the budget, asking questions, comments, things like that, we welcome that opportunity for dialogue with members of the public. So, we did want to make sure we reminded folks on that. Uh, then we will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So, moved.
Moved by Andrea and seconded by Christine. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you everyone. Very good.
This has been a special presentation from the Brighton Central School District Board of Education.